Want to get rid of passengers?
They will.
Yep, words here. No, you just have to work.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody can speak from the microphone like this, everybody.
I hate them.
I'm not gonna hate you.
Huh? I know, I have a mouse voice, I get it.
You could hear fine when I watched it on YouTube. I found out what you guys were all about.
Chair. How are you, Ms. Campbell?
I'm having some time for a problem.
I chaperoned a group of six or twelve graders through some outdoor obstacle courses for a few miles. I feel it.
Planning board had a discussion about the driveway permits and streamlining. So we, I'll explain it to you in a minute.
Oh, they get rid of their own people?
They all want to do that.
Twenty-five to twenty-eight?
A week.
A week. Now is that for the year, for the summer?
Not from May until, I bet. The guy's gonna lose his shirt for twenty thousand.
Yeah. And he supplies gas and those other things.
Yeah, so you got it, nice.
Yeah, only bring these are really old because this is part of.
I got, um. Yeah, where is she? She's right over in the office. And then, it's younger girl. You guys want her to kind of let me know her case? Or do you kind of handle it beforehand and let them know? Because I don't necessarily want that Amy. I have a hashtag, #WidowNotGross.
Okay.
I started a new construction. That was back to something.
It's seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Start with the pledge of allegiance. Tonight we have myself, Amy Freak, Joe Marco, Ed Spiker, and Melissa Prunier, our assistant. Um, we need to approve the minutes from last meeting. I don't have a mess. I did it already.
Do you want me to shine?
Yes.
Sorry, something.
Yep. The correspondence, I have this email from, um, Eighty-two Camel Hum, and I think you've talked about it.
Already been addressed, Joe's gonna take care of it when the weather's better. Joe's gonna go over and talk to him. Oh, the gold stock. Joe's gonna go over and take care of the damage that was done when the, uh, when it dries up enough not to be playing in mud.
Okay. I have a letter from the Grantham Conservation. Um, it says, due to my, due to my travel last fall, we were unable to complete the.
Preambulation.
Thank you, preambulation of the Grantham-Croydon Town Line that we started in 2021. Um, we've got the hardest point, tri-point. So this, so this one would normally start at the end of Forehand Road, find the monument by the park fence, and basically work back along the quarter until we arrive back at the recreation park in Grantham. If we still had time, we'll work on the remaining points of east of Route One-twenty.
Which is incorrect.
Which is in Route Ten.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I was gonna recommend penciling in a few days, dates in May, unless anyone prefers weekdays for some reason. I was gonna recommend May thirteenth with May twenty-first as the fallback date. Let me know if anyone here is interested, interested, and it is best if we got either at least one member of the select board or an appointed preambulator on their behalf. Who would like to do this?
I'll take it on.
Want to?
Sure. I've actually done that hike already anyway, from the top to Tampa, right?
Really?
You?
Awesome.
It's not as much fun as the one in the park that we did, so.
Oh.
What?
That's Percy's job too, huh?
What's that?
Being in the park?
Yeah, I did that last year.
Sweet.
All the way up to the town.
So, on to new items, and Joe, you have something new?
Yes, the planning board and I, we discussed the driveway permitting process. There are major discrepancies in it, causing a lag of approximately six to ten weeks to get a driveway permit. We have discussed that in both instances for the select board and for the planning board, there can be an assigned agent. The planning board has voted to make the road agent its agent, so that his signature entails everything. I would like to make a motion that we do the same, so that the person comes in, gets the permit, Joe looks at it, signs it, good to go, they got their driveway permit. Because simply for any of us to deal with the driveway permits, we would have to go out there and look, we would have to do this, to do exactly what Joe does, and then he's the one with the information.
He has the knowledge.
Right, and, and we would shave five weeks off of the turnaround time to get a driveway permit.
I second your motion. You made a motion, so I second.
Yeah, you're gonna say aye.
Can I just ask a question before we?
Yeah.
Is there a, is there means for somebody to appeal, should they feel they were denied unjustly?
They have to go to the zoning board.
Okay.
Any appeal to anything, any turn down, anything like that, has to go to the zoning board.
Okay.
Uh, everything has to go to the zoning board that's disagreed with.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now all they have to do is, Joe, sign it, it's done.
All right, oh, I know, so Board of Trustees. We have. Susan Edwards is stepping up. And I have a letter here to the select board to support the town of Croydon in best method. I would like to be considered for the trustees of the trust funds. I have a business management undergrad degree and a master's of business administration. I have done accounting work for the last forty years. In addition, I have served as the bookkeeper of trust funds for the last three and a half years. Thank you for your consideration. And then we have a letter of recommendation. This letter is provided for the board to consider my thoughts toward the appointment of Susan Edwards as bookkeeper to the Board of Trustees. Susan has admirably offered her service to the town of Croydon and to the trust funds for the next year ending in March of 2024. Susan has been in this position for the last three and a half years. Susan's efforts on behalf of the town of Croydon and to the trustees has been nothing short of diligent and commendable. Another asset to the town of Croydon is that Susan can step in and pursue her work immediately. Mrs. Edwards can and will hit the ground running. Thank you for consideration, Steve Mitchell. So. Steve, uh, sorry, um, Steve Mitchell, yep.
I make the motion, make sure.
I second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'd be glad to help out in this time of need. I do have one request. There is municipal trustees training program down in Concord on June eighth. I'd like to attend in person. It's ninety dollars in person and in thirty miles. And I'll, I'll register and just get reimbursed after, if that's okay?
Absolutely okay, we like, yes, thank you, appreciate it.
And if you would like to make this part of the record so that April can see it, because she might want to attend the training also.
Absolutely, thank you.
Can you just say the name of it?
Yeah.
Or mind? Take it from me.
Um, we also have regarding the trustees, the, um, the situation with the sexton. Um, the sexton Dave Houli that we had, that we had for this year has resigned. We have a proposal from JFT Realty. Dear trustees and select board, my company would like to offer the services of Mark Herschel as town, as the town of Croydon Sexton for the mowing services in 2023 for the seven maintained cemeteries of the town. The cost of the service is eight thousand dollars and will commence on the acceptance of this proposal. Payments and monthly installments in the amount of one thousand six hundred for the period of May fifteenth through October fifteenth shall be made by the town. Any extra moans or requirements beyond October fifteenth shall be built in full days at two fifty, two hundred fifty per day with no partial days. Please, please let us know if this proposal is acceptable. Best regards, James Morgan, President, JFT Realty. So, and this is the, this is the cost that was previously, practically eight thousand?
Yeah.
To do annually? So how do we feel about this?
As long as it's gonna be kept up to snuff and things are kept clean, I don't care. I know whose it is. I know exactly who's the.
It's not mine, the gentleman is doing it. We'll make sure. So do we have to, yes?
I hear that's for the sexton?
The sexton, the mowing of the cemeteries.
Up to the board.
So that needs to come to the trustees.
Yes, they're the ones to do it.
So, so you appoint, or you hire these people?
Yes.
Okay.
What we do is a mystery tour.
What's your name? James, James Morgan?
Is it James Morgan or the name of the person? Which should be in the. Didn't he put it in?
Yes, Mark Herschel. Um, Pat, so we're not doing this, or this? The cash street. So, cash street has been on hold and we've had some hiccups. And I think at this point, if we try to come up with a special meeting in a month and spend the money on it, and then try to get this passed so that we can move forward with the project, we don't, we don't know if we can get enough bodies here. So I feel as though trying to, this is a waste of our time and money. And if we push the project back until next year, it's an election year, all the prices are gonna go down, interest rates maybe go down a little bit, and we're gonna have a better process to obtain the money. So I honestly think that it's best for everyone involved if we push this off until next year. Otherwise, we're gonna have a serious rush and potentially a serious financial headache if the meeting fails.
How does that affect anybody that's been approached to alter anything as far as on a timeline? Is anybody on a timeline?
No one's on a timeline on this one. We have not set, we hadn't set a date with the company that was doing it, and Joe had that.
Okay.
And he's all set with waiting too.
Okay.
So.
But he is gonna do the coverage.
He, yeah, he can do what, he's, he still can do work and do what he wants, but the paving part of it.
Yep. Upon traveling that road, some of the potholes are getting pretty fierce, I think. Within.
Okay, okay, okay.
I haven't been on the road today. I was in the woods with a bunch of teenagers. So as, but that was my concern as of three days ago. If they've been addressed since then, I have no further concerns. Push it back.
It didn't happen.
Right.
Got it.
So, on the tax bill though, will they still be, because we were.
No, because it didn't, technically, it did not pass because it wasn't a ballot vote with the three fifths. Even though we know it was three fifths, it was there. It wasn't done by paper, yes, no ballot. So it doesn't even count.
I'm sorry.
Not, we're gonna do it next year.
No, it's not gonna be taken out.
We didn't get any money. We didn't get any money. We're just pausing. Um, so the front steps. I am getting a, can I call it a spec sheet, for lack of a better word? Getting a spec sheet from my carpenter, he's gonna have it in the next couple of weeks, which will be the perfect, so everybody knows what's, needs to be done as far as code and size and all that stuff. What did you find with cast or granite?
Uh, granite and cast are out because there is a maintenance opening in the center of the stairs to the basement.
Okay.
So we can't close it off.
Okay. The only thing, the that I'd wanna know specifically for the spec sheet is, are you guys adamant that it's Trex or?
I thought we were, I thought we ruled it out.
Well, I mean, we talked about it, but we haven't put a spec sheet down, so I wanna make sure everybody's okay with.
I think, given the choice for PT, I think PT is the better option.
I do too, honestly. It's gonna be cheaper at this point. Okay. And then, that's all I have. Do you have anything?
Um, just a quick thing from Carl Newton today. Just approached me about a property on Redwater that he's got. His neighbor wants to build a shed that's approximately twenty-three by twenty-four, but can't or would appreciate not being held to the setback rules from the property line. If Carl's fine with it, I told him he'd probably have to approach his.
Absolutely, can't make any, violating the ordinances.
Yeah, that's what I was, I just wanted to pass on what I was asked.
Yep. All right. Anything else?
Yes, one other thing on the agenda, um, Moonlight Property, was there any correspondence with the attorney?
I have not gotten anything yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Ed?
Ready to go?
Yep. Um, this time we can open up to public forum. Anybody has anything?
Um, I'm Dale Cunningham, and I assume you've got the letter from Consolidated? They copied me, but it was the letter that they say they are gonna do the town of Croydon. I mean, we've kinda heard it, but it's the official letter saying, saying they're doing it.
Yay.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then also, um, I don't know, it was two years, oh, was it two years ago we got the money? State, um, we got about eighty thousand. Yeah, two different payments, about eighty thousand. And one of the things was that it was for broadband, which doesn't look like we're gonna need it because Consolidated is gonna be paying all that. So, um, I just wanna make sure, I mean, there's other things that that money can be used for, and it has to be used by the end of 2024. So I think we really need to start looking at what are we doing with this money? So might as well use it, um, to use. I mean, I think that all this equipment that you bought to do all these meetings, I think that'll cover this grant.
I didn't purchase that for any town money, ma'am, that was all purchased out of my pocket.
Okay, but wasn't there a warrant to?
There, there is, but nothing has been purchased yet.
Okay, well, when it is purchased, I think we need to just really look and say, see if it qualifies under this money that we got and pay for it on that. I'm just starting to kinda look at some of the rules and stuff, but I almost think that that building we put up there for the fire department up at the cell tower, that might even qualify.
Really?
So, um, there's all kinds of things that you can use it for. I don't, if you, if we've lost money, you know, from previous years because of COVID and stuff, then you show the losses, and then the money can presumably be used for almost anything. Okay, so I think we need to look and see, okay, what was our revenue over the last several years and compare it to the formula they have, see if we have any losses. If we don't, there's all other kinds of things you can use it. I don't know if you can pay anybody premium pay for essential workers or anything like that. Water, you know, I know the fire department, that do well. I mean, um, you know, I think maybe we could look into things like that. So I, I just wanna make people aware, there's this money and we're halfway through twenty-three, so it has to be used by the end of twenty-four. It can be, as long as, you have till twenty-six, as long as the project's committed by the end of twenty-four. So if you have a contract to do something at the end of twenty-four, but it doesn't get done till twenty-six.
Right, okay.
You know, I think we just really need to start looking at, okay, where is this money? And what are we gonna do with it? And, um, and, Wes, did you do the report? There was a report that was due.
Any report that's been done in the past year?
Okay.
I did.
You did. And so every year you have to submit to the state a report saying what you've done with the money. And I think up to now, we haven't done anything with it. But you just, somebody needs to keep that in their records that the end of April, that report is due.
Okay, we'll come with the select board email.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Last meeting, right after, shortly after the poll comment section, the board kept lamenting all these people sort of getting up and walking away from the position. So I'm glad to see that some progress is being made on the remedy of that. But I, I was a, a little puzzled by the response, particularly yours, Amy. It seemed like I was frustrated, not sensible, uh, but also people were surprised, didn't make sense to me. And I, I was trying to figure out why that would be. And then I remembered back, uh, you meet the candidates at that forum, who said something to the effect of, I don't like the three stators in this town. And the two kind of clicked in my head, and I, because at the time you said it frankly, don't take this personally, because I, I thought you were lying, you said that. And in retrospect though, I, I think that was an honest statement made. And it clarified a lot of things for me, because if, if it was your belief, or it still is your belief, that the people who were alienated over last year campaign was a handful of three stators, it wouldn't make sense to you that a lot of people are sort of putting their hands up and getting frustrated right now. So I, I guess I'd like to clarify, because I think you're an honest person about this, that, uh, people don't alienate people over their beliefs last year. They didn't do this to three or four, uh, cave dwellers, three stators, okay? It was done for very large, hundreds of people in this town. And as pleasant a sentence is that we all sort of come together, that's a lot easier said than done. It was a better thought once upon a time. So hope successful, people are stepping up, that's good. You didn't mention the minor positions, maybe they're getting filled too, but, uh, don't be surprised if it takes a lot more than you anticipate, because a lot of damage has been done. And based on the reaction, I think that maybe, uh, some of you have underestimated that damage considerably, because you underestimate the number of people. because you underestimated the number of people that were sort of cast aside during what happened last year. So it just came to be, especially like the public discussion, and even then, I didn't make the connection first regarding the statements that you'd made earlier. So I think there's a misconception on this, and I think especially the select board in particular needs to understand this, because it continued with a belief that a very tiny number of people were put down. It's a grave mistake and it represents a miscalculation of this town.
I was a big part of the event last year. After we got the vote, I stopped being, playing any, there's no sides here, and I didn't take this position here to alienate or pick sides. And I took this so that, because I'm friends with a lot of people in this town. I don't see people as rich, poor. I see them as my neighbor, my friend, they live on whatever road. And I want everybody to feel included. So I'm sorry if I've been misinterpreted at all. I don't agree with all the free stater beliefs. I don't. But it doesn't mean I wanna alienate them. And I think so far, this board has been pretty reasonable and working together, and hopefully, we can keep doing so.
I was wondering if I could fill one of those positions that he was talking about, would be the medical inspector?
The health?
The health inspector, sorry, medical inspector, yeah. No, the health inspector. And then also, I'm sure a lot of you guys know that the times I'm cutting into in terms of like ambulance coverage, ambulance pricing, contracts, I would love to play a bigger role in that. Been in the industry for 13 years, owned my own ambulance for a little bit.
Which one's stating your name?
What's that? Oh, yeah, Andrew, Aljada, paramedic.
Andrew Aljada. Thank you.
But I'd really like to get called in that to, number one, protect our town. Because right now, we've lost four ambulance services in the last three and a half years, which is almost a third of the ambulance services in the state. So I think it's important that each town, which we're seeing now, is there's someone in charge of that, because it's a lot of money for the town, sometimes, not so much for Croydon, but it's definitely a lot of money for individuals too. So like, if you need an ambulance ride, like New London might be cheaper contract wise, but if you ever have to take mine, it could be like $3,000 or more. So like, I wanna make sure that I'm keeping up with that if people have questions, and they have a resource to. You know, I know what normal billing is. I know if they're overcharging, when they're not, so.
Do you mind writing a letter?
Yeah.
Letter to the board, saying, you know, that you wanna fill this position?
Sounds good. And then, so the medical inspector, health officer?
Health officer.
Health officer. I need a position for that. I heard it needs to be filled, so I'll do it. I'm saying, I don't know what it is, so I would love to look at it. And I can look at tires too.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Sure.
We have four ambulance services for state and state and county. So there's only like 12, there wasn't even like 12 ambulance services across the state, we lost four of those.
In the state, the state.
Okay.
But what we, the insurance is covering the whole state, like most, like 50% of what ambulance service does is like state or federal contracts, like Medicaid and state areas, federal PBA, and they'll go to each county. Those services are equivalent, not just with employees, but like for actual services. We lost, last week was a really old service, King, and they covered seven counties.
Hey, Andy, wait, can we do this after the meeting? Yeah, thanks. All right, anything else?
Thank you.
All right, there's nothing else?
Make a motion, lady.
One second. Oh, oh. Sorry, we're so quiet.
I'm back again. I went in there and I looked at the voucher request, and you requested $69,825 bridge. Unfortunately, Article 14 only allowed for $57,562.
How did we mess them around?
From bridges. So you'll need to amend that. I can write you a check tomorrow after I'm sworn in by Paul to cover the 57, 562.
Okay, and then I'll come in and fix that. Yes.
I can print a new voucher tonight.
No, you just do a supplemental voucher for the difference.
Okay.
Now, all the math doesn't add up, because I believe the bill that's behind that talked about adding $25,000 per minute. Didn't we already pay 12.5?
We paid 12.5 because the amount needed to be increased by another 12.5.
So, okay, that was, sorry.
We need to look at that and figure out what this is.
So we need to look at that after you guys are done and spend five minutes.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah. Just to make sure that it gives more agents to expend, but it still has to come before a vote, an additional amount.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do I make a motion, lady?
Just a second. All in favor?
Aye.